Reverend Dinah Ferguson from Saint Michael's Episcopal Church will lead our invocation and Mayor Proton Boiles will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we come before you this evening and we ask your guidance, wisdom, support, and presence at this meeting of the El Segundo City Council. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and to discern what is truly important. Open our ears and our hearts to our fellow council members and to all those who come to address this council. Help us to speak clearly and honestly as we offer our own thoughts and wisdom on each topic. Guide us in our deliberations and give us the courage to make the right decisions. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, and bless us and all the people we serve. And continue to remind us that all we do here this evening is in service to others. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening is a very special evening in our city. It's the night where we get to come together and we get to thank the people who volunteer in our city and make it really more than a town. You make it a community. We have representatives from almost all of our committees and commissions here. There was a little reception earlier this evening and the council went out there. And city staff members went out to thank everybody who uses their time, treasure, and talent to make El Segundo a warm city of neighbors and friends and just make it really special. So I personally want to thank you and I know the council does too. And our recreation superintendent, Arisia Hester, is going to name everybody. We would like you to come up front after she calls your name and stay here because we would like to take a photo with all of you. So, thank you, Arisia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, City Council as well. Before I get started, I just wanted to say some things about volunteerism and how important it is. It's a very important part of our public service. To be a volunteer, you must be willing to give one of the most precious and priceless gifts, and that's your time. As we all know, in the recent days, time is not promised. It is a gift and every moment is important. We spend so much of our time running from place to place or to the next big thing. But how much of our time is spent making a difference? Our volunteers give from the heart because they want to be that difference. Even as we acknowledge our volunteers today, we can never pay them back for their time. Volunteers, the bonuses you bring with your experience, your vision, your skills, and your passion are constant reminders that we would not be able to do what we do without you. We want you to know that you are priceless and this evening, although we can never thank you enough, we want to say thank you for all that you do. At this time, we would like to recognize the volunteers who are here tonight. After I read your name, please come up and visit Ryan over to the side and get a small token of our appreciation. But if you could, please remain standing out front here. We would like a photo up at the end that Robert will provide to us. So, and if I butcher your name, please forgive me. I apologize. I have a difficult name too and Meredith laughs every time someone butchers my name, but... So, it's our little private joke, but here we go. So, we'll start with Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. We have Dolores McAllister. Economic Development Advisory Committee, Lily Craig. And if I don't repeat the committee, that means they're from the same committee. Tonight, we have Spencer Bauer. And Lance Rawls. From Environmental Committee, we have Jack Ashworth. Kevin McGay. And Betsy Wilson. I think Betsy Wilson is from library, so I apologize. From library, we have Carrie King. Kim Harris. And forgive me if I mispronounce the last name, Linda Cruz. Marcia Marion. Claudia Hodder. And library board member Sarah Whelan. Okay. Mark Marion. And for outreach, we have Dawn Seward. Irene Turner. Diane Smith. And for Recreation and Parks Commission, we have Lee Davis. And our RSVP, we have Cheryl Bailey. Carl Jacobs. Maria Erdelli. Maurice O'Brien. And for Senior Citizen Housing Board, we have Paula Rotolo. And Senior Club, we have Joyce Harris. And for our youth volunteers, we have Aiden Verfali. And Erin Verfali. And we also have Tim Anderson. Ellie Vincent. Gabriel Ramos. Kevin Goddard. Wednesday Morales. And for Capital Improvement Projects, we have Mike Rotolo. Advisory Committee, we have Eric Carey. Think that's all I have for tonight?
Anyone whose name wasn't called?
Oh, where is he? Oh, I don't have glasses on, Neil. I'm sorry. And Neil Von Fleu. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone else I may be missing this evening? Okay. We would just like to say thank you. Thank you again. We cannot thank you enough for the work that you do for us. Again, our jobs, we're working all the time, so when we have those extra hands and extra minds in there, it's just a great thing for us. So, thank you. If we can go ahead and get that photo opportunity?
Oh, great. Let's get our youth volunteers up here. Oh, that's our youth volunteers.
All right, let's see what we can do. Everybody, I see everybody. All right, let's see. You know, we can't because it's attached to the camera. Thank you, thank you, Stevie. I really appreciate that. All right, I think we're gonna get everybody. Here we go, guys. And one, and a couple more, a couple more. And one more, one more. Look at me, smile. All right, and one more. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are so blessed as a community to have so many people who care about our town. So, this evening, we have a proclamation that Councilmember Perstek will read.
All right. So, proclamation from the city of El Segundo, California. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, school, and through technology such as the internet and cellphone. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually in our community. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 National Bullying Prevention Month and encourage all schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and the community to engage in a variety of awarenesses and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Perstek?
Here.
Brand?
Present.
Member Du?
Here.
Mayor Proton Boiles?
Here.
Mayor Fuentes?
Here. Now is the time for public communications related to city business only. Five minutes per person, thirty minutes total.
Hello, it's been awhile, huh? Still being over here. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and to councilmembers. Thank you for having me here. As you know, Tree Musketeers were started back in 1987 by a group of Girl Scouts trying to change the world. When the original organization formally closed back in April this year, the youth, including myself, banded together and wanted to continue the work of environmental change, youth leadership. We gathered as much resources as we can get and reunited with the city of El Segundo and called ourselves Tree Musketeers, the next generation. We, the next generation, invite you, as well as the passionate city of El Segundo, to come together and provide tender, loving care for our trees in memory row on Imperial Avenue. This will take place this Saturday on October 21st from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We will water saplings, clear tree rings, and provide mulch to these trees so that they may retain the water. As you can see from the bead of sweat on my head, it's pretty hot, so be sure to bring some water. And, believe me, without volunteers, we wouldn't be able to run Tree Musketeers. So, please, come out and help help some trees. They're your neighbors too. Bring your friends, family, coworkers, even your dog. Flyers will be outside these chambers, so please sure to grab one on your way out. Thank you so much. I hope to see you there. Goodnight.
Hey, seeing no more public communications, we will close. Council comments?
I had a question. Someone asked me recently, if we just clarified, Tree Musketeers, if we wanted to get ahold of you or someone to reach out, what address would they go to? Is there a point of contact that we could go to? Okay.
Would you repeat that through or have Fernando? You didn't introduce yourself, Fernando.
Fernando, would you mind stepping up and just clarifying how?
Step up to the microphone so people can hear you.
So, I've had a couple people reach out and say, where are they located now? Now that they're no longer on Richmond, so maybe you could clarify how people can find you guys.
So, people can find more about us at the Johnson Center. We are now partnering up with the Parks and Parks Department, right? Parks and Rec or Parks and Park? Yeah. So, be sure to contact them. One of our main points of contact is through Sean. So.
Sean Green.
Sean Green. There we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, that's... Okay, we're gonna open up public communications. You can speak into the microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm actually a parent of one of the youth managers. And I wanted to just add to what Fernando already mentioned. If you'd like to learn more about the next generation of youth leaders, they also have a website that you can go to. It's still www tree musketeers.com. And you'll have email information and phone numbers you can contact for that one. And a lot of information about what they've done so far after the original Tree Musketeers closed. And we have some flyers. I took them from outside. I can leave them right here with you.
Thank you. So, we're closing public communications again. Anything else?
Just want to thank all the volunteers for supporting our city. Without them, we couldn't have an amazing city that we have. So, thank you to everybody who's given their time and their expertise because, you know, the city encompasses a lot of different functions and it's important that we tap into resources in their community with expertise. So, thank you for everybody giving their time.
Thank you. Procedural motions. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So, move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Consent agenda. Any polls?
Poll number four.
Polling five and seven.
Anything else from this side?
We have a motion to approve items one, two, three, and six.
So, move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Item number four.
Okay, on four, just some points of information around this.
Could you read it, please, Dr. Brand?
Read it. Consideration of possible action to award a standard public works contract to Rojas Construction for the Construction of Americans with Disabilities Act sidewalk ramps for the Community Development Block Grant Project. This will pay for twenty more spots. And my question is, how many have we done before we start this twenty? And how many are on the list still to do? Has this been going on here for ten years or so? And I'm wondering how our progress is going. So, that's my question. Items good.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Through the mayor, this program, the CDBG grant funds over the past ten years. And currently, we receive about fifty thousand dollars a year. We typically carry over at least one year to maximize the economy of scale. And in the past ten years, we've done approximately three hundred and twenty-five of the ramps. And at this point in time, with these twenty, as far as remove and replace, that would complete the effort of what I'll call the low-hanging fruit. You know, there are others out there, particularly in the Smoky Hollow area, that have infrastructure and challenges. Maybe there's utility poles in the way or other utility infrastructure grade differentials that require more work than just the ramp possibly going on the private property. So, at this point, this is the, I'll say, the final twenty along with another twenty or so alternatives, alternate bids that are what we consider going after this year. Budgeted this year with the twenty, we're doing another five to receive truncated domes. The kind of the yellow dotted covers.
Thanks. Looks like we've, you know, made progress over the decade and that's good. Appreciate that answer. Thank you. And now I move approval of item four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Item number five.
Consideration of possible action to reauthorize to reauthorize the fire department to purchase a new 2018 Chevy Suburban one-ton four-wheel-drive command vehicle fiscal impact eighty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Just a simple question, chief. We had talked about including at least an environmental consideration. I didn't see that in the memo. Was that considered? Is there a viable option for this type of vehicle? Thank you.
Guys, great, great point. On a go-forward, I think that that's our anticipated response is to put environmental impact. This was really reauthorization. We had approval to purchase the vehicle from a council report several months ago. There was some logistical errors that took place and we weren't able to purchase that. We're now purchasing the 2018 model. That does have environmental impacts to the good for the city compared to the fourteen-year-old gasoline engine that we're purchasing today. So, my apologies for not including that in this report.
It's okay. Do you happen to know off the top of your head if it's got the on-off controls when you're at a stoplight, idling, that kind of thing?
I do not know that, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton, to your point, I believe the environmental committee and staff are still working on the policy that would then come before council.
Okay, thank you. If I move approval.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Item number seven.
Consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute professional services agreement with Civic Plus to purchase, install, and implement recreation management software for online program registration, facility booking, and administration related to programs and services offered through the Recreation and Parks Department in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, and increase the amount of the current professional services agreement with Prosum by twenty-five thousand dollars for the purposes of managing the implementation of Civic Plus fiscal impact not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. So, just, Greg, I know that the tech committee opted not to approve this software, so I would just like to hear from Meredith because I missed that meeting unfortunately, the rationale as to why we want to proceed with this. So, just why this, you believe this is the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, this process has definitely been an informative process and working through the Technology Committee has been, I think, really beneficial for the process insofar as learning how to implement some of these new technology softwares that we're looking at. But basically, we received two proposals from the RFP and the costs varied greatly. One was for twenty-five thousand dollars and one was for fifty thousand. So, there was a big cost difference. Basically, what it came down to in the end with the Technology Committee is some of the technical functions in terms of their desires for looking in the very long-term future for the city and integration with different systems. They felt that neither of these software solutions really had all of those things that they were looking for. And so, where we were left with is sort of a decision on either to continue to move forward with one of the options or to reject the bids and go through the process again. And due to things such as time, the Aquatic Center opening in the summer was definitely one consideration. Costs was another consideration. To keep our current system, it was gonna be three times as much as we pay. Uh, costs was another consideration. To keep our current system, it was gonna be three times as much as we pay now because they're ending the support for that system. Uh, so time and costs were, were probably the main things.
And Meredith, can you speak to the research that staff did about the experience other cities have had with this? And the, and the time to, to implement?
Sure. So, uh, between the two, uh, vendors that we were pursuing, uh, through these proposals, um, the one that we're selecting and recommending tonight is Civic Rec. Um, we did do reference checks on both, uh, products, and this one, um, was heads and shoulders above, uh, in terms of reference checks and the feedback that we received back from, uh, from other cities, particularly with the implementation and the functionality of the system. Um, the system, uh, that was double the cost is actually a fairly new system, and a lot of the cities felt that it just wasn't ready yet, that it had a lot of, um, a lot of promise, I think, for the future, but unfortunately, uh, a lot of the cities were having, uh, difficulties getting it up and running and fully functioning. And with the time, uh, that we're looking at trying to implement this, Civic Rec was the one that was confident in being able to produce the timeline, um, and to transition and implement the, the, um, software in time.
And then one of the other pieces that came back after further study was that the other software, there were some questions about, around security. That there was some concern that the security on the software wasn't as, as good. So that's why neither softwares were the best choice, but we had to decide, do we continue on our path and pay triple the amount of money or move forward with one of the software? So that's, we're kind of in a, a bit of a spot.
Right. I think the interesting thing is, you know, obviously, um, there are a lot of users of, of this software, the customer being the end user, um, and then the, uh, staff on the administration side. And, uh, the technology committee comes from a very different perspective, um, with, with obviously the technical knowledge. So really trying to marry all of those different perspectives into, um, coming up with the best solution, um, for right now. And, and I think it's a really good, uh, I don't want to say compromise, because staff is actually very excited about this product, and, uh, we think that it will be fully functional, and we think our customers, uh, will really see a big difference.
Okay, thank you. I move approval.
And just one last thing. Just, we will be leveraging the tech committee on the implementation of the project and use their expertise to ensure that the implementation goes as smoothly as possible.
I think, you know, for me, just Meredith, kudos to your team. Uncharted territory, right? Never done an RFP, software selection. Um, and I just want to be sure, to your point, that the implementation goes as smoothly as possible, which means user group setup and the whole nine yards. You leveraging not only the tech committee, but the residents, so this is, um, having rolled out a lot of technology, it never goes the way you think it's gonna go from an implementation standpoint, so I want to be wary of that. Thank you. I move approval.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. New business. Item eight. Consideration of possible action regarding an informational report on the quarterly update for the strategic work plan and the key performance indicators for fiscal year-end September 30th, 2017 fiscal impact nun. City manager.
Mayor, members of council, this has been a group effort, um, on the parts of the, the council members and the department heads, and, and Joe Lilio and his staff are the ones that are responsible for compiling the information every, every month and every quarter and reporting on it. This is the end of the year, although I think we have about eight months' worth of actual KPIs and a year's worth of the work program. Uh, the directors and I have met to go over the year-end and to sort of evaluate what, what the KPIs have told us, um, what some of them haven't told us. Um, we do plan on coming to council next month with, uh, to present and have you adopt the strategic plan that we developed over the summer months that has next year's work program, but also probably to talk to you about changing some of the KPIs. Uh, most of them are very good and very valid, but some of them we want to, we want to adjust and, and have a discussion with now that we've had eight months' worth of experience using them. It's that one, I think. Got to turn it on first, right? Thanks. Warming up.
Good evening, Mayor Fuentes, Mayor Proten, Boyle, city council members. So this is the last, uh, quarterly update for fiscal year 16, 17 work plan, and then, um, executive staff with the city manager will get together and go over the 17, 18 work plan and present that, uh, to city council along with new three-year strategic plan, uh, that we worked on and developed during the summer. So there are a total of 91 work plan items, um, and I'll go over the three categories. We have, uh, it's green, yellow, and red. Uh, we have 63 work plan items that have a status of green, uh, which means they either have already been successfully implemented or are underway to be, uh, completed. This represents about 70% of the total work plan items. 23 work plan items have a status of yellow. Yellow indicates, um, that they are on track to begin in early 17, 18 and to be fully completed and implemented, uh, within 17, 18. And this represents about 25% of the total work plan items. Um, at this time, staff is recommending five work plan items, uh, to be deferred to either, uh, fiscal year 18, 19 or, uh, for later implementation, or to be completely removed. And I'll go over, uh, some of these, um, highlights in each of these categories. So I'll start off with, uh, the green items, and I'll go over some, uh, key highlights in the green items. Um, PD has developed a curriculum for citizens training academy. Uh, this first training academy class graduated in late August 2017, and there's, uh, academies, uh, continuing. HR has begun the initial research, develop, and employ engagement survey. Public Works in conjunction with Recreation and Parks has completed replacement of the synthetic turf at Campus El Segundo. It's a big accomplishment. Recreation and Parks successfully implemented numerous festivities to celebrate the city's, uh, centennial. City manager's office has successfully implemented the city e-newsletter and expanded use of social media as a communication tool, uh, to constituents. Planning and building safety has implemented numerous code amendments. Recreation and Parks has expended, has extended the summer youth programs offered. Finance has begun to, uh, process and develop a master user fee schedule and update all user fees. And again, that will be, the first draft will be presented to council in, uh, December. Continuing with the green items, HR has prioritized vacancies to address filling critical positions, um, in an efficient manner. Economic development helped successfully plan the Champions of Business event. The city filled a full-time emergency management coordinator, uh, during the summer. Fire and police are upgrading their radio frequencies from an analog system to a new digital system that complies with federal mandates. Both fire and police are underway on upgrading their computer-aided dispatch, Senator Cannon. City manager and finance have developed a residential and business community satisfaction survey utilizing the Net Promoter Score methodology. Uh, the surveys went live, went out, um, in early October. Uh, the business surveys were done 100% online, and that ran for a period of two weeks. It closed on Feb-, um, Friday, October 13th. The residential survey was a combination of online and paper surveys, and that was because some, uh, of the residents chose to, um, receive, uh, city communications only online, and those are the ones, individuals that received the online survey. And, uh, those who have not chosen that, uh, method are receiving the paper survey. So this survey will remain open through the first week of November, and we anticipate to have, uh, results of the report, uh, to city council by the first meeting in December. So we have both the residential and business, uh, survey results. The work plan items with the status of yellow, so there are 23 work plan items with the status of yellow that will be carried over into fiscal year 17, 18, and are on track to be fully, uh, completed in 17, 18. So when you do see the 17, 18 work plan, those items will just carry over. The five items with the status of red, um, so staff is recommending that these items, uh, be deferred to either 18, 19 or later for, uh, implementation, or possibly, uh, removed from the work plan altogether. So the five items are development of a formal staff training program and plan, hire a consultant to assess and identify performance measurements for staff to more effectively and efficiently perform their jobs. Um, Top Golf, um, which was voted, uh, on October 3rd by city council. The Little League Miracle Field, uh, was a CI project that did not make the 17, 18 CIP list, um, so it was not, uh, recognized as a priority project by CPAC. Um, so that will be continued in subsequent years. Agenda management system, the technology committee did not recommend approval of, of this project for 17, 18, so again, that will probably come up, um, in 18, 19. So these items will be reevaluated by the city manager and the, and the executive staff as to whether the project should remain on the work plan, um, or be postponed or be entirely removed. So next step, next steps, the staff will work on updating the 17, 18 work plan based on the priorities identified during strategic planning, plus any carryover items already in progress. Staff will review and evaluate, uh, KPIs, um, for the 17, 18 work plan. Staff will present the 17, 18, uh, revision to the three-year strategic plan along with the updated work plan, either during the second meeting of November or first meeting in December. So do you have any questions on the work plan status update?
Uh, the Miracle Field, where, where was that to be located? Was, was there a suggested location? I know CPAC didn't rate it.
You know, there, there were options discussed. Um, I think the, the final option that was being discussed was at Richmond Street. Um, the school district has indicated some willingness to participate in that effort, but wanted it, wanted us to wait until they undertake a larger, potentially a larger remodel of Richmond Street School.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then you had a point up there, a bullet point, Joe, around, uh, police and fire trying to update, um, I think it was a dispatch system, but isn't that in Hawthorne? There's a regional dispatch center, so why would we be involved in that?
Chief Donovan will come and address it.
Which point? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Um, this is indeed a dispatch center that's located in the city of Hawthorne. It's, uh, regional communication system. There are two important factors that go into this upgrade that impact us locally and do have, um, uh, a lot of energy and effort put before it. Uh, the first one is we're changing our radio frequencies, and what that means is the handheld radios that the police and firefighters use are going to a complete new frequency. That's being done through Homeland Security grant funds to build out the system. It's tying into the dispatch center, but there's a lot of end-use work that's being done. And so the police officers, uh, right now, the police department is going through and surveying the inventory of handheld radios and mobile radios. We're doing the same on the fire department side to make sure that we have the equipment that can work on the new system. The second, uh, piece to this is the dispatch center is doing a computer-aided, uh, CAD, computer-aided dispatch upgrade. And there is a vendor by the name of Mark 43 that will be doing, uh, building this new CAD system. What it requires, though, on the end-use from our perspective from police and fire, is an awful lot of integration work. And so we have, uh, police staff and fire staff regularly meeting with the vendors to make sure that they're building the system that meets our needs, uh, for the officers in, in the field and the firefighters responding. And so though it's a regional dispatch center, it has tremendous impact, uh, locally here.
Is it possible to arrange a tour, uh, of the Hawthorne Dispatch Center? Uh, so we could take a look at that operation?
Absolutely.
If council was interested. I, I think that, um, we shifted to that at some point, maybe 2009 or something? And, uh, not, not been over there. It's around Broadway?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Happy to do that.
I'd like to see that, like we went to that other center.
Yes, sir.
That was good.
Fusion Center?
Yeah.
Homeland Security?
Yeah.
Certainly do that.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment, Joe. Um, the one item on the red category that I would hate to defer, especially if we're considering additional revenue sources, is the one around, I think this refers to organizational effectiveness. Are we set up as efficiently and effectively as we could be from an org structure standpoint? Um, productivity, one of the, one of the observations I have about the KPIs is that, and I've mentioned this before, that the denominator's not there. So it's hard to get a productivity number if it's just an absolute number of permits, for example, divided by how many headcount, how many hours, that kind of thing. So I have a hard time, uh, endorsing any revenue increases without looking at if we're operating as effectively as possible. So we just hope to keep that on there, that that doesn't fall off.
And your last slide said that staff was gonna review that. City manager and staff.
That is correct.
So when will we get an update on that? Like, in terms of what your decisions are on those five?
Well, we'd like to present it, um, as a whole package, uh, with the new three-year strategic work plan, um, strategic plan, the work plan and the KPIs. Um, so we're, I think an aggressive deadline would be the second meeting in November. Probably more realistic one would be first meeting in December.
Thank you. Okay.
And then all, and all the, the yellow items, the 23 that, that aren't here, is there, are you going to assess those since they're just beginning for this next fiscal year to ensure that they're still a priority?
Well, most of them have already begun.
Okay. They have?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and they were identified as a priority on the 16, 17.
Okay, so they're still part of that.
But they're in process and...
Yes, correct. In process. Okay.
Well, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor. Is there any questions on Exhibit B, the KPIs, at all? That concludes the, uh, presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and your staff.
Mayor, may I make a quick comment? I love, this is great, the quarterly recap of how we're doing. I look forward to, this is the first time I think we've done it, right? So this is, as far as I know, right, since I've been on?
I believe you're absent the first time.
Oh, was I?
Yes.
Whoops. Well, I like it. I appreciate this. So keep it up. It's great. Thank you.
But it does get better each time, so. Good job.
Yes. Thanks to our staff and our leadership. Thank you. I mean, the leadership, like Greg, not leadership here. Okay, item number nine. Consideration of possible action to explore discussion of evaluating and recommending potential City of El Segundo tax measures for the April 2018 ballot. Fiscal impact varies. City manager.
Mayor, members, members of council, um, we're in a unique position wherein we have strived to balance our budget. We accomplished that this year, largely due to Measure B passing, and, and actually did more than accomplish it. We were able to make some strategic decisions around infrastructure improvements, facility improvements, and technology purchases. But we know we have a problem. We have a problem two years from now. We're gonna start experiencing a structural deficit on the operations side with, without even bringing into discussion, uh, by and large, technology and infrastructure issues. So, um, we do have some options. Obviously, we, we need to control our costs going forward and exercise fiscal constraint. Economic development continues. We rely on economic development every year to enhance our revenues, increase jobs, and, and keep up with rising costs, but we have significant cost increases two years out that we need to start planning for. And, uh, what, uh, Joe, Joe Lilio, our director of finance, is gonna do is present some options around some things that we have talked about as far as revenue options, like the fact that council directed us to look at the business license tax, but some other options as well. So what we really wanted tonight from council is, is to gauge your interest in moving forward with any of these items. There is some, if you are interested in placing a, a revenue measure on the ballot, there's work that staff needs to do and the city attorney's office needs to do to, to prepare for that. But we didn't want to do that work without getting some direction from council. All right? So I'm gonna turn it over to Joe at this point.
Okay, so the agenda for tonight is gonna be defining the fiscal issue. Uh, fiscal policy discussion on proposed tax measures, and then direction, uh, from city council on moving forward with any of the recommendations. So starting off with defining the, uh, fiscal issue, um, we have total unfunded liabilities in the pension obligation. We have total unfunded liabilities in the pension obligations totaling $134 million. I would like to point out here that city council has been, began to address this issue. In July, we prepaid the unfunded liabilities for 1718 and saved the city just a little over $250,000. With the adoption of the 1718 budget, we made an advance payment towards the pension unfunded liabilities of $600,000, which saved the city just a little bit over $1 million in interest. So we have begun to address the pension issue, but there's much more work that is required. Also, the next meeting, the first meeting in November, I will be bringing various solutions for the pension liabilities. So you'll be getting a report on that first meeting in November. There are unfunded OPEB liabilities. OPEB is other post-employment benefits for the city. It's really retiree health insurance. That's totaling $30 million. So the city does have a trust set up for this benefit. There's a total of $21 million funded right now. Again, we do have $30 million that is unfunded. Unfunded infrastructure, there's annual ongoing need of about $2 million in street and sidewalk gutter improvements and repairs. Facility needs assessment will be conducted later this fiscal year. More than likely, the results will identify tens of millions of dollars required to address city aging facilities and infrastructure. There's an unfunded technology need of $5 million. So total unfunded fiscal need for the city over the next 20 to 30 years. And all those items I mentioned on the previous slide really is looking at, you know, long-term horizon, 20 to 30 years. It's anywhere from a range of $200 million to $250 million, which if you break that down, it's about $6.5 million to $12.5 million per year. So not factored into the above discussion is unfunded labor negotiations. So future labor negotiations will need to be funded, and that fiscal impact is unknown. So this slide was presented to you previously during the budget adoption. So the orange line represents expenditures. The green line represents revenues as projected. And the blue line represented a projected recession. Yeah, so the expenditures are all O and personnel staff, so there's no funds in here set aside for any capital improvements or road or street improvements. And so you see, beginning next fiscal year, 1819, projecting a slight deficit of $500,000. That can obviously be addressed. But going out from there, 1920, we began to see about a $2 million deficit, and going out to 2223, we're reaching a little bit over $5.5 million deficit. And please stop me with any questions you have along the way. So the fiscal policy discussion will be around three different tax measures. Business license tax, utility user tax, and local sales tax. Now, there's various other tax measures that, you know, we could have added to this discussion, but I think these are the three that are probably the most important that should be addressed first if we are going to move with putting anything on the ballot. So we'll start with a discussion on the business license tax. First of all, it requires, any tax measure requires an affirmative vote by four members of the city council to place the measure on the ballot. And if it is placed on the ballot, it requires voter approval of 50% plus one, so these are general taxes. What we're looking at with the revision to the business license tax, potentially generating $1.5 million to $2 million per year, and that's ongoing. This includes revision to the sales tax credit, revision to the late penalty credit, updating current language in the code that is very outdated, updating the methodology used to calculate the business license tax. So as part of the restructuring of the business license tax, we're looking at creating a small business exemption credit. And this is just for really illustrative purposes here. Any business generating less than $6,000 on an annual basis would be, in annual gross receipts, would be exempt from taxes and fees associated with the business license tax. So if city council was interested in putting that small business exemption on there, that dollar amount would be obviously set by city council. Revision of the sales tax and penalty credit. Currently, there's a sales tax credit equal to 40% of the sales tax a business generates, which can offset up to 100% of the business license tax. So here we have two different proposals. Option A, reduce the sales tax credit to 10%. Option B would be to eliminate the sales tax credit altogether. And then we're proposing to eliminate the late penalty credit. And I'm going to get into more details on each of these options in subsequent slides. We're also updating language in the municipal code around redefining business types and categories. A lot of that needs cleaned up, excluding old business models such as circuses, Wild West shows, et cetera. Add shared economy. Add shared economy business type, so, you know, these are new business models, virtual offices, shared rides, short-term rentals, et cetera. So this slide represents the revision of the sales tax credit, and I do have five fiscal years there as an example. So the maximum sales tax credit is listed in each fiscal year. I guess let's focus on the bottom year, 1516, which is the most current one listed here. Maximum allowed credit would have been $3.8 million. The credits actually claimed that year were equivalent to $1,368,000, which is about 36% of the credits that were allowed. And the late penalty credit in that year was just under $30,000. So the late penalty credit is not really a material amount, but we would like to revise that. Yes, Dr. Bren?
Why did only 36% claim it? Why didn't everybody claim that?
That I do not know.
The discrepancy between 1.368 and 3.835.
It could be they were not aware of it, that could be.
Right.
I think, can I conjecture? It's evidence that they don't understand it in there, but we're not really getting the value of a sales tax credit, because I think the notion was bring people here, new business here, give them that sales tax credit. But if only a third of the people are collecting it, then it's not been used to for that reason.
Thanks, that's interesting.
May I add, it's certainly a selling point, the two times we won the Eddie, that was a big driver, and I do a lot of LA EDC events, and I'm asked to sit on panels, and that's always brought up.
Yeah, so there is, just as a reference point, there was just a little bit over 230 businesses that actually applied for the credit and received some sort of credit. And there was just under 150 businesses that received the credit to completely offset their business license tax, so paid zero business license tax. Now, I think one of the items here I would like to discuss is the city's exposure too. If everybody applied for the credit at $3.8 million, that would have really added to some of the city's structural budget issues.
Well, these fees are very modest, and maybe some of the businesses just are happy with how low they are. And that's another thing we use to win the award twice was, these fees are really low. And I've had a number of people relocate their businesses here and say to me they were just knocked out at how low the fee was compared to what they're paying in Marina Del Rey, for example. So there might have been some deliberate, I'll take a pass on that because I've got a good deal here in the first place, but we're just speculating.
Right. One other piece of information is the, several years I was in EDAC, this topic didn't come up one time, not once. And that was 17 people in the business community, several of which are brokers and developers. So I didn't even learn about it till I was on the city council.
So I do have a bottom chart there, reducing the sales tax credit. So again, our maximum exposure, if we look at the 1516 years, just a little bit over $3.8 million. If we reduce that to 10%, the maximum exposure would be $1.2 million, which is almost in line with what individuals are claiming anyways. Now, if that same threshold held true, an average of 43% of the businesses claimed it, and we reduced it to 10%, we would have just a little bit over half a million in sales tax credits.
Joe, who else offers that? Does anyone else? I know there's some charts in here that relate to the rates, but in terms of that sales tax credit, do we have any neighbors or?
That I'm aware of, no.
Who are we competing with on that?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of, but we can look into that. I can work with Barbara Voss and see.
Another model just did it for the first few years.
Ours is forever, okay.
Most business-friendly.
I think Barbara can get that from the LA EDC.
Okay, so one of the other items we're looking at is restructuring the way the business license tax is calculated. So right now, the current model has a base rate of 10 employees and 5,000 square feet, and you charge a base of $103. Everything over 10 employees, you charge per headcount. Everything over 5,000 square feet, you're charged 25 cents per square foot. So with the new, with the new business model, really that we're seeing, you know, a lot of the virtual offices and items like businesses that represent those type of models, we're proposing splitting the business license tax into two different rates. So one based off of square footage and the other one based on employee headcount. Square footage, 1 to 2,500 square feet would be a flat rate of $100. 2,500 to 5,000 square feet would be 10 cents per square foot. And anything over 5,000 square feet would be 25 cents per square foot, which is what the rate is now. Employees, we're proposing changing the headcount from a flat of 10, going now to per headcount. So employee count 1 through 10 would be $10 per employee. Everything above that would be at the current rate of the $127.55 per employee. And miscellaneous businesses that do not utilize either the square footage model or employee headcount model would be a flat rate of $350. And again, these are all, you know, we can talk about what rates they should be or the models. So to give you an idea of the group that worked on this was myself, Barbara Voss, the revenue manager, Juliana, Sam Lee, planning and building director, the city attorney, and the city manager. And just as a comparison, this next slide represents, so commercial, which would be general retail, food and drugs, restaurants, going to the new model, five employees, 2,500 square foot, the current charge again would be that flat rate of 103, the new rate would be $150 for them. If they had 10 employees with the 5,000 square foot office, the current would be $103, the new proposed would be $450. 30 employees and 15,000 square foot office space, the current price is $5,154, and that goes up to $5,601. So the minimum increase is $47, maximum increase would be $447. And hospitality, which is hotels, we're proposing bringing that to a flat rate of $350. Is there any questions in regards?
I just, yeah, can you just talk about the rationale? Because it seems like the percentage increase for the small business and medium business goes up dramatically, but for the larger companies, it's a slight increase? And I wondered why, from a percentage standpoint, why that is?
Sure. And I'm going to get to subsequent slides that will also show cities around us what those rates are for some of the smaller businesses. So we're trying to capture more of, I guess, the modern business model where they're going to smaller office space, smaller employees, headcount. You can, we're not based off of gross receipts, so you can have a multimillion-dollar operation that doesn't not, you know, doesn't need a lot of office space, that doesn't need a lot of frontage, that maybe have one or two or three employees that are operating it. So we're trying to capture some of that new business model, virtual office space as well.
Why wouldn't you come up with some type of hybrid where you're looking at net revenue as well? Because you're penalizing people. It's like you're trying to change, you're trying to capture that without really capturing it correctly, because you could have a small office that's generating millions of dollars with a couple employees.
I think when we did the comparative analysis to other cities, we found that El Segundo was very cheap business license fee for the small businesses. Were less competitive when it comes to the medium and large-sized businesses because of the structure, because of the fact that you're exempt right now from most of the fees if you're under 5,000 square feet and under 10 employees. We have not received positive feedback from council with respect to basing business license taxes on receipts.
Well, maybe if it's kind of some hybrid, some combination of the two.
Okay, well, let's get through the rest of the presentation, we can talk about options.
I have a question for you about hospitality. I'm a little concerned because that's the one industry in our town that took a big hit with the TOT, even though it's paid from people for out-of-town. But does hospitality, 1 through 14 rooms, does that include Airbnb? I know that's going to come to us. It does. So anyone who has Airbnb, home away, VRBO, they're going to have to have a business license.
Yes, that is correct.
But it would be the same price as someone who has 50 rooms?
Yeah, we're trying to capture that, the Airbnb, and I don't know if you have anything to add to it, Juliana?
Thank you, Juliana.
Sure, good evening. So yes, so on the Airbnb cases, they will be just paying exactly at the 1 through 14 rooms. And with the larger hotels right now, they do pay, so the majority of our hotels now, they do have more than 50 rooms. So they probably are all under this $435. So what are we proposing here is, in order to capture Airbnb, but also create this little bit of a balance, to just put everyone at the 350, so the hotels in a way benefit because their business tax itself go lower. The majority of our hotels, they actually don't employ their own employees, that's why their taxes are so low. So they contract out other companies that staff the hotel, the hotel boutique, and the restaurant for themselves. So what happened is the hotels actually end up paying a much lower business tax, and the companies that they contract for staffing are the ones that are paying on the employee count.
Are we assuming here with the Airbnb and VRBOs that they, there would be a TOT tax that applies to them in addition to this base?
Correct. Once we bring this item, like that will be proposed, that TOT is included with the short-term rentals. Thank you.
So this next slide, it might be a little hard to read. We're comparing the City of El Segundo, the current business license tax rates with Torrance, Carson, Redondo Beach, Long Beach, and Manhattan Beach. And what you'll notice is the small, the medium-sized businesses, which are defined below small is defined as five employees or less, under 2,500 square feet, medium, anywhere from 6 to 20 employees, under 5,000 square feet. So the City of El Segundo is significantly lower than our neighboring cities in the small to medium category. And you'll see Manhattan Beach actually is a flat rate of about $9,000.
Has Manhattan Beach been like that for a while, or is it? Do you know the last time they?
I don't.
Just curious. And then when it says largest corporation, would that be, like, how many? Has Manhattan Beach been like that for a while, or is it? Do you know the last time they?
I don't.
Just curious. And then, when it says largest corporation, would that be, like, how many?
So that's going to be employee headcount over 100 and over 40,000 square feet.
That's the average of our employers, which have much bigger employee counts than Manhattan Beach, but probably not Torrance. Or these other cities, but.
Yes, and this does not include the sales tax credit, this is without the sales tax credit.
And why is the food and drug so much more expensive than general retail on El Segundo current, for large? What makes food and drug different than general retail?
So I'm going to make an assumption here, without looking at what makes up those categories, it's probably going to be the square footage and employee headcount mixture of those two.
And where would like a Boeing or a North River AT&amp;T fall?
So what's listed over here is in general, only your retails, but they would fall under the same largest corporations.
That was a methodology.
Correct. Correct. So it's the aggregation of the square footage and number of employees.
So these are actual, so these are actual, those, their people are paying today. So who's the $48,000?
So those are not actuals that people are paying off today. Those are like example, average examples for this type of group. So for example, under the largest corporations, you would have employers that have an average of like 100 employees, you know, like or more, and at least 40,000, so at least 100 employees and at least 40,000 square feet. So an average would be around that price. So for us to break down, I would have to get, you know, like the exact amount of each one of those companies and the employee count and the square footage. But that is just to compare, you know, like across the board with, the reason why we use this type of example is because if you use the retailers, and the major retailers, for example, under largest corporations, they are going to be present in each one of those cities. So it's, you know, like it's a comparison that can be done to a larger retailer, a small retailer, a medium sized retailer, that they are present in all of those cities.
The methodology that we used in these examples is at the bottom of the page, right?
Correct.
The largest corporation example has 100 employees and is over, is 40,000 square feet. And you compared what that business license would cost in El Segundo against those other five municipalities. And those are all municipalities that don't have a gross receipts?
So I'm going to make a correction on what Joe explained about Manhattan Beach. What Manhattan Beach does is, they charge a flat rate, and actually you have a table on the same presentation. Manhattan Beach charges a flat base of $227.16, and then they charge $2.06 per thousand gross receipts, over $66,000 in gross receipts. So everything over $66,000 gets charged at $2.06 per thousand, but they cap that at $8,797, if I'm not like mistaken. So that's why it looks like everything that is capped, because even a larger retailer selling, you know, like extra amount of money, extra over 66,000, gets capped at this $8,797. And then you add the base of 227 to it.
So they use some type of a hybrid with the gross sales and square footage, but they also apply a cap?
No. So Manhattan Beach does not use the square footage and number of employee. They have for every business across the board, different flat, different bases. So on the retailer side, it's going to be $227.16, you know, like despite the number of employees or square footage. It's flat for every business under the category retailer. Now, they do hybrid because they added the gross receipts charge over $66,000. The other cities, Torrance, Carson, Redondo, and Long Beach, they use employee count and base rate. They do not take in consideration the square footage.
So one of my concerns about only using square footage and employee count is that we're penalizing people for hiring people, basically. Because if we went with gross sales or net sales, net revenue, we'd be capturing those people that are making a lot of money without employing a lot of people. And I know it's a touchy subject, but I'm sure there's got to be some type of hybrid that we could come up with that would capture both.
The other concern with doing gross receipts is there's a program management aspect to that that would require more work on the part of the city. And dispute resolution and appeals, and it becomes more of a process than something that, you know, square footage is usually pretty straightforward. We do get into some discussions with people about the employee headcount here in town. But the cities that do have gross receipts, I think, spend more administrative time auditing and administering those types of programs.
I can tell you what I hear, Carol, from the business community, especially technology or anything with a lot of intellectual capital, is that it's, they don't, gross receipts have a very bad reputation. In fact, Garcetti, a year and a half ago, was considering repealing, trying to repeal it, but they just can't do it because they need so much of that for their revenue base. Most business people I talk to want to steer clear of anything with gross receipts on it because you might not be penalizing those with headcount, but you're penalizing people that are super productive, that want to bring like a video game company here or something otherwise, where they're going to get taxed on all gross receipts. I struggle, though, to Carol's point with the, you know, $48,000 for the largest corp, food and drugs, or $19,000 for general retail, is so much larger than some of these other. Did your analysis look at reducing potentially the tax on the high end? Or is this just keeping?
Yeah, or keeping the status quo and it was adjusting it at the lower end.
I would just really like to understand that $48,000, because that's more than double the general retail. And I don't, we don't have a drug, a food or drug, other than like Ralph's here. We don't really have a food or drug company.
So just in general, under that category, you're going to find your grocery stores. You're going to find like your pharmacy, like Walgreens and Rite Aid's. They are all under the same category.
But how about, so say, say, American stores wanted to relocate their corporate office here. Would that be considered food and drug?
For corporate store, yes, it would.
Or, so, or how about the new, like Kite Pharma? They're a drug company. Do they fall under this, or do they?
So they would follow under this. The difference here is because the actual supermarkets, like the actual drugstores, they not only have their storefront, but they have storage space and the entire area, you know, like within their property, which they are paying square footage on. So it's different, like a corporate office for all of those businesses, probably it will be under the same category, but with a much reduced tax because the number of employees in square footage is much smaller. Now, just remember that those numbers do not include the offset from their sales tax credit. So this is just raw, this is how they would have to pay, had we not had a sales tax credit.
So instead of offering the sales tax credit, couldn't we adjust what they're paying? I mean, so basically, we're charging a high amount and then giving them a credit. Why don't we just reduce the initial amount and not have the credit? Like we're doing here to get to here, why don't we just get to here?
So just as a reminder, like the sales tax credit only applies to this category. And not every business in El Segundo generates sales tax. Therefore, not every business will have the tax offset.
So which category, the?
The retailer. So everyone, yeah, so every company that has point of sale, those are the ones that are going to generate sales tax, sales tax. That's the ones that could apply for the sales tax credit.
If you look at the big space and defense companies, they don't get sales tax because they sell to the government.
Is there a way to get a slice of this that looks at some verticals like aerospace, biomed, et cetera? I mean, I think we know who we want to recruit into town and what would be the implications for those types of companies?
So, yeah, I think because of our privacy, you know, like to act, right? I think like what we can disclose is the size of the business. And at this point, I don't know if we are going to be able to disclose the industry.
I mean, in aerospace alone, we have small, medium, large, extra large represented. We probably have enough data points where we wouldn't.
I think we've kind of gotten off track on this topic in that, what we really did was look at the current methodology, if I'm right. Well, besides the sales tax issue, sales tax credit issue, what we really did was look at our methodology and decide that instead of letting employees 1 through 9, and the square footage less than 5,000 go for free, that we're going to start assessing a tax on those, on employees 1 through 9, and on square foot 1 through 5,000. And because we didn't want it to be such a dramatic increase, we've discounted those rates from the current square footage and headcount rates. So a small business is going to pay more, and a medium sized business is going to pay more, but we wanted to sort of cushion that blow. And because we've started charging, for example, Boeing for their first nine employees when they have 5,000, and for their first 5,000 square feet where they have a million, their increase is going up incrementally very small, like $400 a year or so, right? So what I think council is getting wrapped up in is what a current, a business currently pays for business license tax in El Segundo versus somewhere else. And some of these larger categories, yeah, they're going to pay more per year under what staff's recommending, but it's about $400?
$447.
$447.
Okay. But if we, if we're not looking at it now, when are we going to look at it again? I mean, that assumes that what we have in place now is the right model, right? And we've never asked, I don't think we've asked the business community what they think, but I've heard from people that they actually think it is expensive to do business here. So, I, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, please finish, I have a point, but.
I'm just saying that if we're going, if we're looking at a major issue, like bringing a tax measure potentially, or several onto a ballot, I want to understand it fully. And I want to know where we're at in the market fully before we make that kind of decision, not just here's where we are, here's where we're going.
The one, and I think you're right, the one qualifying point of that is, when you look at a cost of doing business in a city, you need to bring into that discussion all of our taxes.
Yes.
And we're going to have a conversation in a moment about UUT. And I think it is fair and accurate to say that the business license tax in El Segundo for a large business is higher than some of our neighboring cities, but our utility users' tax is much lower.
Yeah, and I just want to add one more thing. You referenced LEDC, they look at several factors, right? And so one thing that's changed is that you used to be able to in Class A creative space here for $2 a square foot or less. There are areas in town going for $4 a square foot or more now. And that is one of the biggest expenses a company has to relocate and are moving here. So we have to, I think we have to look at this holistically and say, it's not just the tax that we're creating, but what is the cost of doing business? Like in the EDAC, we had a chart that we used for a long time that showed our rent rates relative to our competition. And so I'm just suggesting we look at this a little bit more holistically, and that we're competitive. But I also agree that there seems like there's room on the bottom of the scale, for sure. But when I look at these numbers, like Carol pointed out, where there's a huge variance on the high end from where we are versus our competition, I would want to know that a little bit, you know, more about that. That's all.
And the size of the companies, and you brought up a point I was going to make. The Los Angeles Business Journal tracks all the office and what's empty and what it's going for. And if you look at this space, El Segundo is not the deal that it was before. In fact, most recently, it said Torrance is much less expensive than us. I sent the article, I think, to Barbara, and maybe to Greg, but I know to Barbara, it just, it's all a balance and a dance, and what businesses are coming to town and what's the revenue we get from them. As I always say, churches and schools and government, nice to have in a town, but it's mostly providing services and not getting any revenue, so.
And then, Joe, when was the last time these fees were changed?
So there's an annual CPI inflator that's added to it. But as far as adding the CPI, it's been, I don't know, maybe 20 years or more?
I agree with Drew. I think we need to do a little bit more of a deeper dive on some of these numbers.
I know times are the essence, right? Because you guys have, we're talking about prep time to get on the ballot if we're considering doing that. But I had another question, which is, you know, one of the things I learned recently is that, there's like five different vertical industries within marijuana, right? And that we have already established that we're not going to allow commercial activity, at least not for now in the city of El Segundo. We don't think that's what our residents want. But one of those is delivery. And delivery is already happening in El Segundo. And we're not getting a business license tax or a fee on that. So is that part of this $350 flat rate? Are we, would that be included? Or is that, is that something that if the council decided we're going to allow it because it's happening anyway in town? You can go to an app and look, I've heard. Are we going to try and tax that separately, or tax that as part of this?
That would be under the 150, right?
Well, even if you're an illegal business, you're supposed to pay taxes, but in all likelihood, rather than issue a business license to them, we would go after them, code enforcement matter. Council wants to permit them.
I'm suggesting if we, if the resident, I haven't seen the results of this marijuana study that we did recently, but if the residents felt like that's something that they wanted in town, how would we tax that? Would we tax that through this, or would we tax that separately?
Well, I think, subject to, if it's recreational, it's subject to sales tax. And I think the point of sale would be in the city, so we would receive that. Want to require them to have a business license to deliver it in the city. Would need to establish that as part of the process.
So yes, what I think that we can do is create a category for that. Like, so one of the, you know, like the points of structuring this is also updating the business definitions, and that could come back as one definition on its own category of like tax structure.
And then one other one that, just because I pay in a lot of cities is, you know, if you're going to service a customer in an area, and you're a service-based business, you're not generating a sales tax, how would we address that? Is that the generic tax as well? So if I wanted to operate 1-800-GOT-JUNK, and I already have a business license in Gardena, for example, and I wanted to operate here, that would be the general tax?
So the model that we are proposing is a base tax. The current model has different tax structure, different calculation methodology. For example, under like a delivery service, you know, providing trucks, it would be paid by vehicle coming into town.
And that, okay, and that's got a whole other, and that's another thing that we might want to address because that model is difficult. You have 20 vehicles in LA, and 2% of your revenue is in El Segundo, for example. So there's challenges with that, the way that business license tax is structured as well, from my own personal experience. And then there's the enforcement side. I mean, how many people, plumbers, roofers, do business in El Segundo that don't pay a business license fee?
Or even Lyft?
So at what point do we start enforcing that? Is it just, you know, what? Because I know cities sometimes will do audits and try and figure this stuff out, but I think there's a lot on that end, too, to your point, Greg, about program management enforcement, but.
Gardeners, I've been asked about them before.
Or even just like Lyft and Uber drivers driving and picking up in our town. Food trucks.
Yeah, how do Lyft and Uber, does any city, I know big cities have negotiated with them, like Austin.
Correct. So they negotiate with the company and not with the drivers themselves. For us, if we're going to, so part of that would be updating our municipal code to add those shared economy, you know, like new businesses coming into town, that we allow us to create a tax structure for calculation for this type of businesses. Today, we don't have anything specifically that would allow us to, you know, like unless we put them on a miscellaneous category, but we don't have any rules to do that.
That, to me, represents a significant opportunity because you think about how much Lyft and Uber are generating in our city every single day from our residents.
From the people who park illegally on our streets.
Yeah, exactly. At least, let's get some money from them.
I just, so there's some legislation that are now like, just, you know, like kind of to be approved, regulating different ways that cities can now tax transportation companies, those networks. ways that cities can now tax transportation companies, those networks and tax cabs. So we might lose our ability to, to require a business license for them. But I will like some more research on this. I know it's on the legislative right now.
Julie, I want to thank you. You're so knowledgeable. And I know that you attend a lot of meetings and a lot of education opportunities so that you're well-versed in this and can answer
Thank you.
all our questions.
Thank you.
So as for next, I mean, I would like to, for me, I would like to look at that $48,000 and understand that a bit more on the larger food and drug. And I'd also like to reevaluate the hospitality rooms. I don't think some, one person with the Airbnb, one room in their house should pay the same price as a flat fee as a hotel with 50 rooms.
Well, in some ways, they're impacting the neighborhood more than a hotel is because hotels have onsite parking and Airbnbs take up street parking, which is already at a premium. So.
Yeah, I just don't think they should be taxed the same or treated the same.
So we actually have some other options to discuss that, that may actually, council may decide to pursue one of those other options rather than the business license tax at this point, but if we could get through that presentation.
Yes, we could. Thanks, Joe.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. Do we have a sense of how many Airbnbs we have in El Segundo right now, what the revenue opportunity is on that and the TOT?
I know Juliana and Sam worked on getting some rough estimates and I don't know, was it around $100,000?
About, yes. But we have a currently listed.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we, we just pulled some analytics together. So, you know, without like really going deep into it, we noticed that we have about 95 listings on a monthly basis that are not duplicate because you're going to see a lot more, but because it's the same listing in different sites. But like non-duplicate is about 95 listings at an average of $180 a listing a night.
We don't know how many nights.
We, what we don't have it yet is like how many nights they are being, you know, like rented out. So if I think like we put a little study just for, you know, like for the purposes, like if they rented about like 50% of the time, about like 180 days a year, that would be generating in TOT along about like $350,000.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
And we'll get through the rest of this presentation. There's two other tax measures, but another option would be splitting the business license tax measure into, one, maybe addressing the sales tax credit and the late penalty credit and updating the code. And maybe a second measure on getting into more of the detail of how the tax is structured and stuff, and I'll put a possibility mark.
So we'd have to go to a vote, even if we just wanted to eliminate the sales tax credit and the penalty, late penalty?
Yes.
We'd have to go to a vote?
Correct. So this is a graphical depiction of that previous chart. And you'll see El Segundo's very low on the small business, sole proprietor, that flat rate 103 compared to our neighboring cities. And even on the medium-sized business, we're very low compared to our neighbors. Okay, so policy options to discuss are, you know, status quo, no action, or direct staff to look into pursuing a revision to the current business license tax structure and ordinance. Next, next tax measure to talk about is the utility user tax or UUT. So again, this requires an affirmative vote by four members of the council to place on the ballot. Requires voter approval of 50% plus one. And to put things in perspective, each 1% increase in the UUT would result in about $1.7 million in additional revenue to the city. And again, that's just the business side only. Currently, the UUT rate is 3% on electric, gas, and water. And it's 2% on telecommunications, wireless phone. Just to, again, put things in perspective, a 1% increase there would result in about $400,000. Each 1% UUT assessed on residential, again, that's all these same categories as the businesses, would result in about $625,000 a year. And the current rate for residential is zero. Next two, next two slides represent the various cities within LA County that have an assessed UUT. And I highlighted Carson, which only has a 2% UUT on electric and gas. So that's one of the lowest rates. And that's on residential and businesses. Culver City has the highest. It's 11%. And that's across the board on everything that's assessed on residents and businesses. And then on the second slide, City of Vernon has a 1%, again, across the board in all categories on residents and businesses. And if we take the average UUT rate, so for businesses, we're averaging electric and gas about 6.1%, water and sewer 6.4%, and wireless telecommunications phone about 5.9%. The average assessed residential UUT rate, electric and gas is about 6%, water and sewer 6.4%, and then the wireless telecommunications just under 6%. On the cities that have a UUT, no, but there are cities that have a different rate for residents and a different rate for businesses. And if we go back to the first slide here, City of Azusa has, and that's on the top, has electric, gas, and water, UUT of 4% on residents, 8% on businesses.
Are there any cities that have low UUT for residents besides El Segundo?
No. No, that have a UUT. So there are lots of cities that don't have any UUT on residents and businesses, but cities that do have a UUT, there are no other cities that have a zero rate on residences.
Okay, so there are other cities in LA County that don't charge a UUT to residential?
At all.
As long, I think I understand what you're saying.
It's complicated.
So there are many cities that do not have a UUT at all. So it's not assessed on businesses or residences, it's zero. Now, there are some cities that do have a UUT, but they have a different rate for businesses and residents. So there's a different tax structure. Of the cities that do have a UUT, City of El Segundo is the only one that has zero rate for residents.
Thank you.
So this just depicts, at least on the business side, that we're about half of the average. Getting here to policy options that we're asking city council to consider is a status quo, so take no action, direct staff to look into pursuing an increase of the current business UUT rate of 3% on gas, water, electric, and/or an increase to the current business UUT rate of 2% on telecommunications. Another option would be the direct staff to look into pursuing, setting a new rate for residential UUT assessment. Okay, moving to the third tax option, a general local sales tax. So currently, the City of El Segundo does not have a general local sales tax. The current rate here in El Segundo is 9.5%, which is what the rate is, the lowest rate in LA County, any city in LA County. So if we wanted to look into pursuing this, it requires, again, affirmative vote by four members of council to place on the ballot, requires voter approval of 50% plus one. And I gave three different options here. So there's a quarter percent sales tax that would generate about $3 million per year to the city. Half million local sales tax would generate about, I'm sorry, half percent local sales tax would generate about $6 million per year to the city. And 3/4 of a cent local sales tax would generate about $9 million per year to the city. And the tax can either be in perpetuity or include a sunset provision ranging from five to 30 years. And if it was in perpetuity, it can always come back on a ballot box to end it.
So the cap is, is not 10, it's 10 and 1/4?
That, that is correct. So research that I have been doing and just finalized with the city attorneys this morning, the California legislator considers 10 and 1/4 to be the legal limit of sales tax within LA County. Again, this is Revenue Taxation Code 7251.1. There's a base, there's a legal base defined as 2%. So our, our legal base here in LA County is 8 and 1/4%. Certain tax increases have not counted towards the 2% base. And an example would be legislator adopted a code section of the Public Utilities Code, which allowed MTA to impose a transaction and use tax at a half percent rate that is not considered part of the 2% limit. So the agencies actually got, went to the state legislator and, and got, what the correct term is, but they, they got legal permission to not count that tax increase as part of the base. And I'm going to get into a slide here that's going to get into a little bit more detail. In fact, let me move to that slide real quick. So on this slide, we have the state base rate of 6%. We have, it's called the Bradley Burns rate. It's a general, goes to cities' general fund, it's 1%. And a county transportation tax of a quarter percent. So that's a total of 7 and 1/4%. That's statewide. We have, here in LA County, we have Proposition A and C. Proposition A passed in 1980 by voters. Proposition C passed in 1990 by LA County voters. Those two do not, those two rates do not count towards the base. That additional 1% and brings it to 8 and 1/4 for LA County. Now Measure R did pass, I believe it was six or seven years ago. That is a half percent sales tax and that sunsets in 2039. Measure M, which just passed in November 2016, became effective of July 1st, 2017. That's a half cent. There is no sunset provision on that. Measure H is a quarter percent. That passed in March of 2017 and became effective October 1st, 2017. And there's a sunset provision there of September 2027. So that brings the total rate that's assessed in the City of El Segundo at 9 and 1/2. And again, the cap is 10 and 1/4, so we do have 3/4 of a cent. Thus, that's why we have the three options, the quarter cent option, the half cent option, and the 3/4 cent option.
You should, oh, sorry, Greg.
So I just, I just want to touch on Measure M real quick. Measure M, it's LA County Transportation Funding. This was passed by a majority of LA County voters in November 2016. It's a half cent local sales tax assessed countywide and what became effective July 1st, 2017. All businesses and residents within the City of El Segundo are assessed this tax and pay it. The city receives $251,000 on an annual basis from the county as a result of this tax measure. If this tax measure would have been a local sales tax, that would have been $6 million directly to the city instead of the $251,000. And to kind of put it in perspective, over a five-year period, Measure M will result in the city receiving approximately $1.3 million from the county. Again, if this was a local sales tax, it would have resulted in $30 million to the city over a five-year period. So this would have been an additional $28.7 million, an additional revenue to the city during this five-year period. Instead, the county is directly benefiting from this $28.7 million to El Segundo residences and businesses are paying towards the sales tax over the next five years.
And it's based on our nighttime population, not our daytime population.
Correct.
Joe, I know you're going to get to options, but one of the things we discussed during the strategic planning was the, whether or not it would be feasible to put a, I don't know, I guess like a reactive tax in place. If the county votes to go to a certain number, then we, ours would kick in. Did you guys get any legal opinion on that?
Yeah, I think the way that that would need to be worded, I haven't seen any legal precedent on that issue, but I think the way to word that so that protects the city would be that if the county or some other taxing agency, MTA, were to put something on the ballot that, we would word our council want to proceed, we would word our tax measure that if one of those agencies were to put something on the ballot, then ours would deactivate it. And if it were to fail, then it would be deactivated.
So that we, that is feasible. We could do that? Okay, thank you.
I also had asked about taxes that are going to sunset. And you showed some 2027 and 2039, but if it's even possible to have something like that included, so when 2027 stops, we could fill in that gap. I didn't ask you that, Joe, but I asked.
Yes. And Mayor, one of the issues with that is usually the county's ahead of the game on that. So they already know that that's coming up the sunset and they're going to put that on the ballot usually, you know, the year prior. So I'm not sure how that would compete with, you know, the county's measure.
Seeing how the county has a forever tax with a 40-year plan, I think they should be happy with that. You had a slide that showed the sales?
Yes.
The state sales tax was 6%?
Correct.
Is that a forever tax or does that also have different levels and sunsets on it?
So that, that is unless the state legislator decides to go in and change it. State legislature or state voters.
Well, with a supermajority, they don't need to go to the voters for that, right? They can just do it themselves.
And I did add this slide to the presentation. These are the various county measure taxes, starting with the most current one going down to older ones. Measure H is the quarter cent one that became effective October 1st with a sunset date of 2027. So that's the first one that does sunset and that's, you know, 10 years out from now.
That's for homelessness.
Measure M, the half cent, became effective July 1st with no sunset date. This actually increases by an additional half cent for a total of 1% on July 1st, 2039. So they already beat everybody to the punch on this one. So Measure R, which expires, sunsets in June 30, 2039, Measure M picked that up and it's increasing by the extra half percent, the 1% on July 1st, 2039. So they captured that Measure R sunsetting within Measure M. We have Prop C, which is a half cent. That became effective in 1990. There's no sunset date. Prop A, which is also a half cent, was effective in 1980. And again, that has no sunset date.
So the only one that has sunset date is Measure H?
Measure H. Correct. That is correct. It's a quarter cent one. And I can foresee them probably putting additional measures on maybe 2018 ballot, 2020 ballot.
Sure. And then the City of LA also has HHH for the same thing.
Yes. Yeah, and as example, this is real quick, City of Santa Monica, they already reached the cap of 10 and 1/4 prior to Measure H. So Measure H is not being implemented within the City of Santa Monica. So I already reviewed this slide with you. Here's some examples of cities within LA County that have a local sales tax rate ranging anywhere from 10% to 10 and 1/4. There's 15 cities listed there. In, in the November 2017 ballot, there are three cities within LA County that have a local sales tax measure. Montebello with 3/4 of a cent, Hawthorne, 3/4 of a cent, and City of Almonte with a half a cent. So again, those are all on the November 2017 ballot. Yes. Yeah, they're general. So yes, 50% plus one. There are numerous cities in Los Angeles County contemplating placing a local sales tax measure on the November 2018 ballot or some subsequent ballot thereafter. And I have had personal discussions with many of the finance directors in the South Bay and central LA area on this topic. So the policy options that we're asking city So the policy options that we're asking city council to consider here are status quo, no local sales tax. Direct staff to look into pursuing a quarter cent general local sales tax, which would generate about $3 million per year for the city's general fund. Direct staff to look into pursuing a half cent general local sales tax, which would generate $6 million per year, and three quarters of a cent, which would generate $9 million per year. Again, looking at that example on Measure M, how the city's only receiving $251,000 from the county, I think is a good example of, if the county does implement any additional sales tax measures, that we can expect not to receive much proceeds from those tax measures. Future financial decisions over the next two years, again, you have seen this slide before in various strategic planning and budget presentations. So whether to seek new revenue sources, how to tackle the capers unfunded liability, prioritizing and funding, implementation of new technology, cost recovery policy discussion, implementation of a fee study, review of current business license models, I'm sorry, of current business model for waste management, trash, review of water and sewer business model, land use discussions, facility needs assessment, infrastructure financing, stormwater costs, future salary compensation models. All these priority items, strategic items have a fiscal number attached to them. So next step, city council give direction to staff on which tax measures to pursue placing on the April 2018 ballot. Direct staff to conduct polling to gauge registered voter support for proposed tax measures. Come back on the first meeting in December for city council to vote on placing the proposed tax measure on the April ballot. And that concludes the presentation. So I think at this point, we're really looking for city council direction on, you know, which measures we would like to move forward with. If you want us to conduct polling on various of these tax measures and see what the support is of the community.
And are we allowed to conduct polling? I don't mean just a survey on the website because that's not scientific, but an actual poll like the one you paid for, Dr. Brand?
Yeah. As long as we can reach people that don't answer the phone also. We need to get younger folks too that don't have home phones as well in the polling. Can I ask a question, Joe, about the fee recovery study?
Yes.
How significant is the opportunity with that one? I don't recall.
So I believe I was asked that question previously. You know, at this point, we don't really have a number until we get a report from the consultant, which is probably not going to be until next month.
Is it material though? Are we talking about, you know, a million dollars, a couple million, a couple hundred thousand?
Remember the distinction, fees offset the cost. So it's not a, it's not a revenue generating opportunity as much as identifying the cost. Are we subsidizing any of those services, and should we?
And it doesn't require a vote, as I recall as well.
That's correct.
Right. So that's why I'm asking, is it path of least resistance? Are we, do we, I know you're still working on that, do we know when we'll get some of that information?
So I believe we should have a preliminary report sometime in November, and then the consultant will be here December to present the first draft to city council. It's not to take, city council won't be taking any action, it would really be looking for direction and feedback from the city council. Now, I know just some of the discussions that I've been on with the consultant meeting with the various departments, seems like we are heavily subsidizing certain types of fees and services. So there could be an opportunity there to increase the cost recovery, and that would really be up to, you know, the policy discussion of city council.
Well, my first reaction is I'd like to move actually that we adopt a 75 basis point sales tax increase conditional on LA County increase in theirs to 10 points. So it would only go in effect, like you talked about, if LA County voted to increase theirs to 10.25. So only in that case. It's the only one that seems obvious to me because there's not, I don't feel like we have enough information. This is great, don't get me wrong, but I'd like to know a little bit more before we evaluate things like business license tax or the UUTs, and have a better sense of how, what our businesses are paying all in, not just a couple different categories, but.
I agree with you. I hesitate to put anything more on our businesses. They really do the heavy lifting in town, and I think we need more information, maybe working with the LAEDC, which is the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation, to see what is attractive to businesses and what's not. And I agree with your, what I call the placeholder tax. Somebody actually came to me with the idea a couple months ago, wasn't mine, but I reached out to Mark and Greg to see if it was legal to do that.
Can I weigh in here?
Yes, sir, of course.
I agree with Drew's priorities, with the understanding that the next time the county advances something, or the sheriff does, and it won't be, it won't be if, it's when, they'll be back.
Correct.
Let's say it's for a quarter percent, then the way I'd like to see this thing structured is then our folks would start paying the quarter, not the, not the three quarters, but the quarter, and we'll just go up to the three quarters as the county does its thing. And that's just all based on the fact that the people here, the businesses are going to pay it, but we're not going to get much back out of it, as you demonstrated. And I think people would feel better about paying taxes, nobody likes it, if they knew it was for us here in El Segundo and not for some services in Azusa or something. But I think that's the best one. The other two, I'd leave them alone for now, I'd gather more information on them. It's this one that really has the potential to generate large dollars every year. So I think focus on that and get our message together on how you explain that to folks, because it's a little tricky. But I don't feel the need for a poll. I think we should just put it on and do it, and then it comes out the way it comes out. Because I would want to try this so that we don't get scooped again by the sheriff of the county. I would want to try to get it, and if we couldn't get it, then they're going to end up getting the money, and it's short sighted for people not to keep the money at home. And I want to ask the city clerk, if we add this item to the April 18 ballot for council members, does it increase the cost at all to throw an additional item on? Is that minor or moderate? Depends on a bunch of things probably, huh? So that's, that's a cost that we'll have to bear to try. But if we wait on this, they're going to get the drop on us again, and we're going to be talking about a half of a percent instead of three quarter and so on. We lag, they'll grab it all, and we'll have nothing.
I have a question about what you said, and I agree, but you said if the county came forward with a quarter percent, so we wouldn't try to beat them to the punch with three quarters of a percent, we would let them get a quarter percent, and then we would only have half a percent left?
No, we do the three quarters, the 75 basis point.
Okay, I missed that part, I misunderstood.
And then when they move forward, I'm just assuming they'd move forward for another quarter, it might be a half, then we'd trigger ours in that same amount.
But if we triggered it in the same amount, there's still an amount that's left that they could fill in with their.
No, we'll be sitting there waiting to play our part.
With the entire.
Pre-approved, right? Pre-approved for the three quarters.
Right. We're sitting there waiting on their move, and when they make it, we'll say, ah, you know, we got in front of you this time.
I think he's saying, Mayor, that if it's at 9.25 now, let's just say the county says we're going to raise it to 9.5, which is unlikely, that they would do probably right, a quarter of a point, but if they did, that we would match that. And then if they came back and said, again, we want another half point, then we would match that.
But if we match that, they still have additional.
No, but we keep going up to the.
It's at 9.5 now, not 9.25, and we can go to 10.25.
Right.
Yes.
You're saying you would go all the, the measure, or the, it would go all the way to the top?
Authorize the whole.
And then it would just trigger as.
Right. And then sit on it, and it doesn't trigger until they make their move.
Oh, it's all additive.
It's all additive.
The county added a quarter percent, and we only added a quarter, that makes the base up half.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So we would lose out on that quarter percent, Dr. Brand? You would have to either implement the whole three quarters, or we would lose out.
You can't, you can't structure this.
What he's saying is it can't be, you can't approve it for the whole thing, and then as the county puts it on the ballot, it automatically would trigger.
Mark could write it up that way.
He's saying they wouldn't have hit their 10.25 yet?
So for example, we're at nine and a half, and let's say the county does a quarter percent, so that would bring it to nine and three quarters, and now you're saying you would like to trigger a quarter of ours. That brings it to 10, there's only a quarter percent left.
No, but.
It doesn't negate their quarter percent.
I'm probably mixed up on this, but if they did that, then we'd trigger our quarter percent of the three quarters we can trigger, and if they passed theirs, they wouldn't get anything from this city.
They would.
They would.
Because we're not at the cap, they would still.
That doesn't work, okay.
So we would have to go the full, we'd have to go the full. Have they ever done a 0.25% increase?
Measure H.
Oh, Measure H. Oh, yeah, but that one's, that was specifically for homelessness and its sunsetting.
Yeah, and it's around getting ready for the Olympics in 27 in 10 years.
And like Joe said, they'll have one on the ballot.
Until they replace it with another one, yeah.
So the residents would have to decide if they're okay with, if anything gets triggered, then we go to the immediate 0.75.
Okay, that's a good point to clarify, I didn't understand that, but that's the way you got to do it.
Yeah, so three quarters, and if any entity tries to put anything else in there, then we do the whole three quarters.
And I wonder if, besides the triggering by what the county does, could we have some language in there where we could trigger it regardless of what they do? So let's just say something not good happened here, like five years from now, we lost the LA Air Force Base, got moved to Colorado. That'd be a big problem here. And could we trigger it then, because we just would need, need the money?
My, I like your idea, Don, I just get concerned, I think this is going to be challenging enough.
Yeah.
Given our, you know, historically how taxes go down, I think the education component's going to be really significant, and that one would maybe confuse folks, I don't know.
Yeah, it is confusing, and I'd rather spend the money through another group for the campaign than for the poll. I'd rather go for it, but then run a good educational campaign, not from the city, but from a support group that sets up to help pass it.
Now, is council in favor of having it in perpetuity, or having some sunset provision added to it?
Well, since we don't know when it would be triggered, we wouldn't, I mean, you would have to choose a date, like a period, a range, as opposed to in perpetu, if it's, if it's sunsetted, the county's going to step in, like you said, the moment the sun sets over, they'll already have something waiting in the shadows for it.
Right.
Like H with Santa Monica.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, but to be fair, we're trying to figure out if we could do that to them in the future.
So I'd just like to weigh in that, you know, I think, you know, I'm opposed to increase in our taxes, right, in general, so I'm against that. I think there's, you know, my priorities would be along the businesses that we currently don't generate revenues from, and that would say like the Airbnbs and the Ubers and those kind of things. I think that's where our biggest opportunity, or my biggest priority would be to, without really generating new taxes, what are we, what are we not collecting that we could or should be collecting today, and addressing those? And then as a part of a sales tax thing, I'm in favor of a force, you know, not really applying it until we need to, but being in a position to where if somebody else is going to charge us for it, we might as well pay ourselves, and I support that 100% too, so. But I'm against raising taxes in general, so I think we need to work on some other issues, like the other side of that, we call those expenses, I think, so that's.
Well, I was going to ask about the business, you had mentioned earlier about splitting the business into two, and not tackling the business license fees, but looking at changing some of our codes and some of our categories, and then creating new categories for these new businesses. So maybe we could move forward with, and maybe eliminating some of the penalties, so cleaning up the business license, licenses, and not attacking, you know, going after the changing of the, of the fee of the actual taxes, but just cleaning it up. So could we do that as well? I mean, is that an option?
If that's the council, if that's the direction council gave us, yes.
Does that have to go on the ballot?
Yeah, they still do.
To address the sales tax credit and the late penalty credit, yes, but just changing, cleaning up the business types, that does not have to go on.
But how about setting up new codes for new business types?
We're not, there's a catch-all provision in the code, so just because a particular business is not identified in our code, they still pay taxes under a catch-all provision.
But how about like the Ubers and the Lifts and the, do they still pay, or do we have to create some type of?
They're a little unique because they come in and out of town, and so I want to talk with Joe and staff about those kind of transitory businesses coming in and out of town.
Yeah. I would like to address those, because I don't want to wait on that and then clean up the business, the business licenses, the descriptions and.
Aren't we around 2011 or so, because of technology?
Right.
There are a lot of things around communications and so forth that weren't covered by our UUT regulations.
I think that's when we developed the catch-all provision in case we were missing things. But every, every business, unless they're exempt from paying business license taxes, should be paying them. Now, again, the Ubers and the Lifts, those are a little different, again, they're in and out of town. There are specific regulations dealing with the taxi cab companies, which really ought to be applicable to Uber and Lyft also, but we'll look into that.
And what about Airbnb? Does that, I know we're going to get a report on that, but would that have to go on the ballot as well, because you're creating a whole new category of tax, or?
I'd have to look at our, I mean, we have a transient occupancy tax which should cover those uses.
So we just have to determine if we want to apply it?
And I know the South Bay Cities Council of Governments is looking at these disruptors of Airbnb and Lyft, those types of things, so they might have information to share.
Yeah, there's a, this matter will be coming to council, I believe, next month. Right.
So my recommendation is to align with Drew and Dr. Brand and Suzanne about moving forward with this, with the sales tax.
Placeholder, see, I like Suzanne, it's a placeholder tax.
Exactly. That's going to trigger, and then, but I also like to move forward on cleaning up some of the business penalties and taxes, and not focusing on the business tax themselves, but cleaning up the.
That would be a second help.
Yeah.
So including the sales tax credit as well, is that the direction?
I mean, do you want to? I didn't hear that, I heard we wanted to wait on that one.
Do you want to wait on the sales tax credit? The business credit?
Carol, I'd like to have a better understanding of how we're positioned across all different costs before.
I just want to make sure we're capturing the new businesses like the Ubers and the Lifts.
So I think in summary, we'll start working on preparing the preemptive or placeholder tax on the sales tax.
Yeah.
Staff can continue to research and prepare information related to business license tax, and if we're able to do that in a timely way, then we'll bring that back to council and potentially get direction there. If not, it'll be held off for a future election date.
Yeah.
Can I, Joe, you mentioned earlier that your peer group, many of them are considering additional taxes. Can you just talk about what's driving that? Is it, do they anticipate, is anyone talking about this preemptive tax like we are, or is it more about the cost structure? What's the, what's driving it?
Yeah, I think two, two main driving factors. One is, just like with us, they're forecasting they're going to have some serious deficits that they have to address due to pension cost rising. And then two is also the LA County coming in with a new measure and then reaching the cap where they don't have that as a tool no longer. So I think those two factors are really what's driving that discussion right now.
Is there a risk that, you said it was, I thought you said it was state legislative level in terms of the 10.25? Is there a risk that that could be revisited once all these cities decide?
I was about to get a buck out of my pocket and say they're going to rein that.
Yeah, we're going to go after it, and then the states go, wait a second, there's none left for us, and. left for us, and...
We're gonna go...
Or the county, I should say.
Right, so I know this actually did go up to the state legislator, I don't know, it was maybe two or three years ago, and was in one of their committees, and it never got out of the committee. So there wasn't support for it then. I don't, I'm not aware of any discussion, I don't know if Mark is aware of any discussion at the legislature level.
Not at the moment, but if your objection is correct about a recession, state government gets very creative during those recessions to take monies away from local agencies and whatnot, so...
And Joe, you had a list up there of cities that were at ten percent or some amount. Did they get there doing what we're talking about doing here? Trying to capture money in their city instead of it going to the county? Is that how Inglewood got to ten percent, or some of those on your list? There you go.
So, you know, I, I don't know the answer, Dr. Brand, to all the cities, but I know of some of the cities on here, they were just in, and most of these cities had passed it during the Great Recession. So they were in really dire straits on meeting their budget, and they had severe structural deficits, and that was the driving force for some of these cities.
So they, they weren't necessarily seeing a day when this option would be closed off, and the county would have captured all the money, they were just trying to create revenue to, to get through the recession?
That could have been the force, the driving factor behind Santa Monica, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because that seemed to be the one when, was it H passed, and they said, "We're not paying, because we're at ten and a quarter, we're done."
Right.
You know, and then everybody goes, "Did you see that? You know, see what they did?
Right.
Uh, hey, maybe we oughta think about that." That seemed to be what triggered it.
So this April election could be to our benefit to get ahead of...
Yeah.
...the other elections.
Absolutely.
So, my selfish question now comes, people with home businesses that pay roughly twenty-some bucks a year now, what are their tax, what are their business licenses gonna be in the future? Seven thousand or what, what are you gonna, what are we gonna do to them?
Hundred and fifty.
Well, so we're proposing that small business exemption, so depending on what that threshold is, whether it's six thousand in grocery receipts, or ten thousand, they could be exempt, if they fall under that small business exemption. Now, if they don't, the base...
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty? A hundred and fifty dollars would be the base.
So it goes from twenty-something to a hundred and fifty-something for...
This says a hundred and three.
That's the current.
That's the current.
Yeah. No, I'm saying, you said from forty-three, and this says a hundred and three.
Twenty-three, twenty-three for a home business.
Yes, we don't have all business types on it, because there's quite a few. So if they fall under business, small business exemption, it would be zero?
Well, sole proprietor type businesses that people run out of their houses, consulting businesses and stuff that don't generate sales tax or anything. Those are still, those are like the twenty-some dollar a year fees, what happens to those going forward?
It would be a hundred and fifty dollar base, based on what we're proposing.
So, I, I know your salary adjustment for the next salary.
All right. Okay, so do you have enough direction?
Yes.
Very good. It's nine eleven, we are taking a break for five minutes, we're gonna be back here at nine sixteen.
We're almost done.
Okay, we are back. Time for reports. City manager.
Just a reminder, we've changed, as of yesterday, the city hall hours, and to a certain extent, the city hall days, cities, days of city services. We're now open at seven AM, which is the same starting time, we've been on for quite a while, but we close at five PM, and we are open on alternating Fridays, with this Friday being the first one. There's a detailed schedule available on the city's website and Facebook, and this was also covered in the e-newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney?
Yes, I think you all heard today, but I guess from the public too, the governor did not sign SB six forty-nine, which I think is good news. So, it seemed to be the odds were being predicted as being very high that it's going to pass, be signed, so, only thing to look out for is that often the US Congress or the FCC steps in, and where the state doesn't give the carriers more rights, they do, so we'll see what happens. Last week, the governor signed fifteen bills related to providing additional housing in California, particularly aimed at moderate and low-income housing. I have not read the fifteen bills yet, I will admit. I did hear a summary of them, they had some cross purposes, and I believe in that you had varying groups lobbying for, I guess, their piece of the pie, you had the home housing industry lobbying for the housing, you had the labor groups lobbying to make sure that housing was built at prevailing wage, which really sort of creates a train wreck, because you're telling people to build affordable housing at premium labor costs. So, again, I need to read all of that and work with staff and see what we have to do as a city. I think that's a new record for bills on a particular topic in one year, and it's probably something we're gonna have to address over the coming year. And over the course of the next few weeks, I expect lots of, there's lots of bills sitting on the governor's desk, and we will provide a, we always provide every year, I think, the staff with regard to the bills that get passed that affect their areas of the city, be happy to show that to council, getting it.
I have a question about the fifteen bills, the affordable housing and the prevailing wage. Since the ADU bill was to provide more affordable housing, does that mean anybody who builds ADU has to pay prevailing wage?
Again, I haven't read them yet, I just was, as I heard, or was listening to a presentation about them, it was a short presentation, words prevailing wage came up quite a bit, and so I thought that was, again, contrary to actually building housing, most housing, you get into high-rises, steel, construction and whatnot, that's very specialized labor that often involves prevailing wage anyway, but usually when you're building housing, that is not the type of construction that is built at prevailing wage.
So, it could be an unfunded, another unfunded mandate, because then there would have to be an enforcement, or...
Or the businesses might just look at it, the home builders just might look at it and walk away from it. I mean, it still requires them to get permits and whatnot, and a lot of the affordable housing ideas that have come out of Sacramento candidly just haven't worked. The land values in California, cost of construction, and trying to acquire affordable housing in exchange for some benefits, a lot of times the benefits accorded the businesses just don't provide as well, that they don't provide enough businesses to incentivize them to build the housing, so, I'll have to see what the bills say, but it is something I'm sure that we'll have a lot of discussion about over the upcoming twelve months.
Thank you. That all?
That's all for now.
City clerk?
Kathy.
Our city treasurer's not here this evening, council member Brand.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on some great things happening here in the city. All through the year, we've had a string of these centennial celebrations for our hundredth birthday, and I think the credit goes, kudos go to the Recreation and Parks Department for the support of these numerous activities. The History Committee has had that tent put up, I'm sure Meredith knows, but probably eight or nine times, and it's very popular with people to come see what the city looked like a long, long time ago. And the last time, the fireworks extravaganza, it was last Saturday, a week ago, that's probably one of the most amazing shows in our hundred-year history, put together by Jeff Casey, and it just wowed everybody, and its professionalism and quality, it was quite, quite an evening those of us who are there won't soon forget. And you'll be able to see what we're talking about if you get a DVD, which is being put together. So that was just tremendous, and every thought that Jeff Casey would put together a remarkable show after working with him for five years on the Broadway and the Park, he just has a vision of how things can be, how to weave everything together, and that one was just flawless. I'd also like to shout out to our firefighters who are on these teams roaming from Anaheim straight to work in Sonoma, working a day on, a day off to fight the extreme fires that we're having, especially in Northern California this year. I don't recall when I was superintendent up there, any fire, except just after I left there to go to the Gold Country, the Oakland Hills Fire was terrible, that was like ninety-one. So, it's a lot of tragedy up there in Sonoma County and Napa County, and, and we have a crew up there that's been out of town here and away from home for a long time, and it's not fun work, it's hard, hard work. So I'd like to thank them for the sacrifice of going out there and helping California. And then I'd also like to salute the Police Department for their Pink Patch campaign around October Breast Cancer Month. You notice my tie with the little ribbons on it tonight is in that same vein. I went to a fundraiser Saturday, I think it was, or Friday, at Standard Station, that was really raging. By the time I got there, it was very crowded, we got the last table, and nice event, there's another one coming up in Manhattan Beach later in the month, but a wonderful cause to try to gather resources to weigh in on, and just a lot of good things going on by our employees and by people in and around the city. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Prustak. Is there an item under your name?
Yes, but first, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a couple things going on in our town. Coming up, we have the Harvest Fest, Harvest Festival at the West Basin Water, Water Park, Water District. This weekend, we have the Halloween Faroluk on October thirty-first, so make sure, it's a great place to bring your kids for safe trick-or-treating. And then we have the Skechers Walk down in Manhattan Beach, the Skechers Friendship Walk on ten twenty-nine, it's a great cause for special needs education. And then under my name, I have number ten, consider, consideration and possible action to explore discussion evaluating alternate uses of the two hundred thousand dollars that was allocated in the fiscal year FYI fiscal twenty seventeen eighteen budget for golf course lighting at the Lakes Golf Course, fiscal impact zero. So I wanted to bring to the council that we had approved the two hundred thousand dollars to, for the lighting in conjunction with the Topgolf, the Topgolf items, so we need to now determine what we want to do with that two hundred thousand dollars. I'm recommending that we push it to the Parks and Recs to reevaluate what they're doing, to push it to Parks and Recs to reevaluate in their, in their meeting tomorrow, as they're looking at, currently they have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had allocated to them to look at their open projects, and this would bump it to four fifty, one of those projects being the toilets at the Johnson Center.
I'll second that.
So is this intended for a vote now, or we're just having a conversation around the idea? What's the intent here? What's the outcome expected?
Well, I think what you're talking about is, is directing staff not to spend on the lights, and open it up for potential other uses to be determined by staff and conjunction with the Rec and Parks Commission. Now, if they determine that they want to use it on something that costs more than twenty-five thousand dollars, that'll come back to council for a decision. If they wanted to allocate it for something that's less than twenty-five thousand dollars, and staff would normally be able to make that expenditure. Or we could take an interim step and just report back to council on what the recommendations of the Park and Rec Commission in total, so that you see what those are before we spend any of the dollars.
I, I think this is tied to number eleven, which is under the mayor's name, and I don't know anybody who wants to light the golf course. I haven't had any demand for that, but the Lakes has been neglected for five or six years now, and it would be nice to apply the six hundred... And it would be nice to apply the $600,000 to improvements at the lakes going forward because we're going to need more money than that, but it's a start.
It's only, actually only $200,000.
Two hundred, what did I say?
You said six, but I knew what you meant.
Six?
You said six.
That's wishful thinking, Dr. Brand.
I've been in meetings since 7:30 this morning, so that explains that. Anyway, I would like to see it be maintained for the golf course, not for the lighting, I agree, and have a committee, a panel, a task force inform this RFP that you're recommending so that we can start to move forward in a positive way with the asset that we've got there and stop neglecting it.
I mean, I agree that we need to look at the golf course, but I, at this juncture, I think that our facilities at the rec park, there's some facilities that need improvement there, the bathrooms at the Gordon Clubhouse, the bathrooms in the Jocelyn Center. So I would prefer that this $200,000 went to the Parks and Recs Commission who also oversee the rec, the golf course and then, for them to look at the needs holistically for the Parks and Recs and come back with a recommendation.
Yeah, I think my two cents on this would be that it's, it's $200,000, it's not going to get spent as it was intended, so it ought to go back to the general fund, pretty much, because that's where it came from. And from there, we ought to take a, you know, take a consideration of where it could be spent. And I think what Carol said would be, you know, I would be extremely supportive of that, but I think the departments ought to come out with a recommendation and where that money should get spent as opposed to having us just sit here and kind of dictate where it goes, but...
I'd like to see it go in a parking lot for a while. I do have an item on here for an RFP and like Dr. Brand said, the golf course has not just been neglected, but sadly neglected for five and a half years. It doesn't reflect El Segundo and for people who work there, it's not a very nice pleasant place to work. The golf course itself and the driving range are good, but I think it's just, it hasn't received any love for five and a half years. So before we decide what to do with that money, again, I'd like to put it in the parking lot for a while.
I'm going to move, put a motion that it goes to the Parks and Recs and let the Parks and Recs Commission evaluate the needs and come up with an assessment and propose a prioritization.
I already gave you a second earlier.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Still thinking about it. Parks and Recs is a good place for it, but I'm not sure, you know, my comment was it ought to go back to the general fund, so. I'll just abstain on that one. How's that?
Well, if it, if we abstain, city attorney, what's the vote? Pardon?
Aye.
Yes, but, so there's no vote, okay.
There's no action, right?
Two, two, one. So in favor, for anyone keeping track, it is...
It's in the parking lot.
Pardon?
It's in the parking lot. That's where it is until we decide, so.
Okay. Prustak Boils, yes. Brand Fuentes, no. Dugan abstain. Anything else?
No. So I know that on tomorrow's Parks and Recs Committee, Commission meeting, they are looking at the $250,000 that we had previously allocated to them to come up with a prioritization list. Could you, could we ask Meredith or the staff to come back next week or the next meeting to present to us what they, how they prioritized the outstanding needs and how much money they would need to accomplish their top few?
Right, an update, I don't know if we're going to get...
Yeah, just an update. I'm sure it's going to take a little while, but I just want to make sure that we, because that $250,000 is not going to cover all the needs that we have at the rec parks facilities, especially those toilets probably will suck up quite a bit of it. So I just want to make sure we're accommodating all of our residents.
So to Mike's point, though, don't we want a list from all the departments then?
Well, I don't think we, staff has a problem coming back to council with an update on the priority, the priority list that the Rec and Park Commission develops. Probably will take a little bit of time because once they identify an issue, we then need to work up some reasonable cost for fixing it. So next meeting is probably too ambitious, but we can report back.
Thank you. Is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Dugan?
Pass.
Councilmember Boils?
I'll pass.
Okay. I have an item under my name, Consideration and Possible Action Related to Developing a Request for Proposals to Explore Options for Future Management and/or Alternatives for the Future Use of the Lakes at El Segundo Golf Course Located at 400 South Sepulveda Boulevard. Fiscal impact none. City manager, so...
I guess my recommendation is that we spend some time either tonight or at a, at a future meeting, talking about how we want to go about this process rather than diving right into it. There are some very important questions that staff has that we would like answered, like is there, is the council open to looking at options other than golf for that facility? I think that we should look at options that are within the, within the deed restriction, but council may want us to have a conversation with Chevron for things that go outside the deed restriction. But very fundamentally, you know, what, what do we want to accomplish with that property? Is it to maximize revenue? Is it to maximize recreation opportunities? Is it to serve a single sport? Is it to serve as broad of a community as possible? You know, given the last five years of experience with, with Topgolf, if, if council and the, and the input that you get from the community is that it should remain a golf course, then staff wouldn't want to go down the path of looking at other options that are non-golf related. So, you know, what is the best way to get answers to those questions? I heard Dr. Brand say that maybe there should be a group formed or a task group formed that could try to answer some, identify the questions, answer some of the questions and then report back to council with, with a more developed idea. So maybe tonight, council wants to talk about more of how you go about getting to an RFP as opposed to specifically what the RFP is for.
I think it's a, actually a combination of everything you said when you gave us five options at the beginning about golf course. I mean, one of the things I didn't hear was green space, but all of those things, serving our community, making a profit, certainly making more money than it is now. Yes, I like the idea of working on an RFP and what it is we're trying to do, but, but there are people out there who know how to generate RFPs and also I think it would probably, we would probably need one of our city attorneys to be there as well. And we did, four years ago, there was a survey done about companies that might be interested in doing something if that was feasible. So maybe to build on that or, but, you know, to get things going. Yes. And also to look at our, our deed restriction and a conversation with Chevron.
Well, and I think to Greg's point, the purpose of what an RFP is, is an articulation of a vision so that you can go out and find a partner to help you implement that vision. So I think what Greg is saying is that we really need to determine what that vision is because you can't write a RFP if you don't know what the vision is. And I think maybe we do get, form a group together to start talking about what that vision is because if you don't know what your vision is, A, it's hard to write the RFP because our RFP is just a tool. And then who do you send the RFP to? So I think there's a, you know, to do it right, we need to form this committee to, you know, determine what that vision is so we can articulate the vision in the RFP. I also want to talk about, you know, the RFP is a long-term solution, but we do have a short-term need. To your point Suzanne, we need to, there's, there's a lot of tender loving care that needs to happen at the lakes today and we don't have the funds in the enterprise fund to pay for that. So we really need to address the fees in the short term and look at this as a two-pronged approach, short-term and long-term. So if we could direct staff to pull the fee structure and that we can assess it so we can look at it from a short term and then form the committee to look at it from a long term and develop the RFP.
And I think those can be concurrent, like you said. I mean, the fee, we had a fee subcommittee before and that can certainly get going right now. And I know we've talked about actually all the fees.
Correct.
For recreation and parks, but...
Yeah, look at it holistically.
Yeah, but, but they don't, but those can be done...
Concurrently.
Serially and concurrently, though.
Absolutely. Because it's a short-term solution, a long-term solution.
I thought I saw you pressing your button.
So do we want to form a committee to look at the RFP?
I think we need a task force made up of the U Sports Council, one or two members from their Recs and Park Committee, somebody from golf. But I, you know, to your point about vision, if that was green space now and we're going back to Chevron with the grant deed back then, and we ask the community right now, what do you want for the town? I doubt it would be a golf course that we subsidize the golf of our neighboring city's residents. I doubt that would be the case, knowing how much premium is put on field space, for example, for Little League, softball, soccer, lacrosse, football, women's lacrosse, I mean, you name it. There's, there's, there's not enough space, there's not enough green space and to call a golf course is a green spa, I like to golf, I golf Friday, not much, but I like it. But that is not a green space that benefits all the people. It isn't. You got to pay to go on there and play around. And so to your point about a vision, I think our community would say, we need some green space. It can't lose $600,000 a year. It can't, we can't borrow $5 million from the city to subsidize this thing and never pay ourselves back. So it has to be at least cash flow positive or neutral. Or maybe it's a little bit less so because we subsidize Rexham Park, but that Rexham Park benefits the entire community, not a subset of the community. Our average resident, how often do they use Topgolf? The average resident. Topgolf, the lake, sorry. Slipped there. Oh, that's Freudian. But, so I would want to get some vested stakeholders in the community involved that know the space, that care and come up with the right vision, to your point, Carol.
Yeah, I think if you look at the history of the land, this has been a golf spot for a long, long time, way long before the deed comes over to the city. It's historically that when, when I'm a little boy in school, that's where we go out to the fields, the marshlands, et cetera, and the Bollinger Ranch and there was really nothing, you know, developed there. You didn't have the same environmental concerns then in the 50s that you do now. So golf's been going on there for a long time, before the lakes ever got going. And so that's the history. Now, today, if, if you had a fresh start, what would we put there? That's a valid question. If the same decision would be made, given the decline in golf in America, the time it takes, et cetera. And maybe there are other needs that are appropriate. So with a task force, we can start to have that conversation. And I think there should be a deadline on their work product so that we're not just having meetings around it all the time, but can get into the RFP phase of it as soon as possible. It involves Chevron in the definition of recreation and what they're comfortable with with the land going forward. They're definitely a factor in this. So it's just time to turn the page now, the votes finally come in and start to think about the lakes going forward rather than think about the lakes being demoed by Topgolf. We're in a new zone now and they're overdue. Kudos to Scott Morgan for holding that together as well as he did with little to work with for the last five years. And, you know, I hope that he and the employees there can get ready for the new day. We can charge more, I think we should be, and make more money on it than we have been. Yeah.
So, just one quick, Joe, the fee recovery study, is that, does that include the golf course as well? Okay, thank you.
And the other thing I think we should look at is, in a few years, we're going to get some property from Raytheon, was it four acres?
We have an option. I think we have an option, yeah.
Yeah, where that is related to the golf course, the back of the golf course, the driving range. I know I'd asked you about putting soccer fields there and you said campuses, five acres with two, so four wouldn't do two full-size, you know, full-size in a shorter field, but all, you know, looking at as an entire system of what can be there, so.
So could I suggest that staff prepare a, a staff report that lays out the purpose of the task force, a proposed makeup, of course, council can change the makeup, but proposed makeup, the timeline to report back with, with their recommendations and some of the significant questions that, that we think the task force should answer as part of its work.
And then in addition, bring back, bring the fees forward so that we can look at the short-term solution.
Now, the fees, typically that conversation starts with the golf subcommittee. I think the last time we went through this process...
Well, I thought it was a fee subcommittee. We had two former council members who did all the recreation and park fees, not just golf. Meredith, was that, were you here then when that was going on or were you the director then?
And, and not only just the fees, I really want to understand how the programs are functioning and where the money's going through, because we talk about the, the, like the camps and stuff, how does, how do we account for that money? How does that come through? Are we using our new Rexham Parks facility or system when we go live? Like how do we, how do we make sure that we're optimizing our revenue at the lakes with the new software coming and just from a structure standpoint?
Sure. So the fees, actually, when we did the Recreation and Parks Department fee analysis in 2014, 2013, 2014, golf was not included. The golf fees are typically discussed at the subcommittee level and then brought to city council for approval. And our management company will do a benchmarking study, discuss that at the golf subcommittee and make a recommendation to the city council.
And then we also have to look at the, if we want to do a joint use agreement with Manhattan Beach Unified for the use of our golf course?
Right. So councilmember Prustak, you know, like we talk about these, the long-term vision and then our short-term opportunities here. And I'll be working closely with the subcommittee, with our management company and looking at some short-term opportunity that we might have to do some creative or innovative programming, take a look at the fee structures, not just in playing a round of golf or hitting a bucket of balls, but in those program areas as well as, you know, youth camps, the clinics, any sort of golf pro instruction, things like that. We'll really dive into that and take a look at, you know, over the next couple of months, some of the ways that we can financially perform better this year.
Okay, so you say the next couple of months, can we get something back in December? Six weeks?
Sure.
Yeah, so I haven't weighed in on this one yet. I'd like to, there's a, you know, we're talking about utilization of the lakes and going forward with an RFP and there's a document that exists that was written in the 90s about the golf course operations. It's the Golf Course Manual. It's part of the contract with, currently with Lane Donovan and everything else. And it, it lays out pretty much the full utilization and usage of the facility, talks about rate, structures and other things. And there's, you know, the first page of the report is, is what, you know, I think is really important. It is, and it talks about getting a committee kind of, in my opinion, this is how I interpret it, but let me just read the last paragraph on the first page. It says, "All matters pertaining to the operation of the lakes at El Segundo Golf Course, fee and policy changes shall be directed first to the El Segundo Recreation and Parks Director, then to the Recreation Commission, and final approval is the responsibility of the council." So there's a lot of good information here and guidance about going forward and it can incorporate additional things that people would like to open it up to any kind of, you know, outdoor recreational uses or whatever. I don't, let, let the subcommittee work on those things, but there's a fantastic, you know... those things, but there's a fantastic, you know, kind of a perimeter on how to get this thing started and what should be incorporated in it going forward, and then there have been people that have been looking to put an RFP together for a long time, so there's all kinds of, there's been, we've done surveys with people, we've talked about what do people want out there, there's a lot of information that's available out there, so...
Mike, so what, so it calls for the Rec Park Director to, to work with the Rec Park Commission, which is different than what we're currently doing, it sounds like, right? Okay.
So are you suggesting that we go to that, go to the, have, bring it to the commission, not the subcommittee?
So all the discussion is said to include Parks and Recs Commission and everything else, and that's the step that we really missed the last time, and...
And the golf commission, it's not listed on there, but they've been engaged.
So, but, we, we need Meredith's help and leadership on this, so...
Meredith, you got it?
Almost done with the centennial.
Of course, Meredith has it.
Yeah, now that that firework is over with, we're...
Okay.
Sorry.
So we have discussed and provided direction to staff on that. See, I have a bunch of things. Last week or the week before, Barbara Voss, Carol and I attended Ingenuity Days at North Grumman, and you left before the really good part, where we went to the James Webb Space Telescope, which was the coolest thing over there, but you did catch the FA-18 line in El Segundo, and that was to celebrate Manufacturing Day in California. So it's a wonderful capability that we have in this state that I hope we maintain for a long time. I also attended a meeting for the California Military Community Leaders, which are all the regions in California that have bases, we have Los Angeles Air Force Base, and there's Navy bases and Marine bases and Army bases up and down the state, and we get together to discuss common interests and things we can do to support the military, and we work with the governor's staff. I also attended the South Bay Cities Council Government's Transportation Committee Meeting and the Steering Committee Meeting, and I was invited this past week to speak to the El Segundo Women's Club, and that was very nice. Lots of people who live in town and some out of town, but they're very engaged in our city, and they care about what happens here, and a year or so ago, they had the program where they had the hanging flower baskets on Main Street, and they were asking about that, and I told them some of the things we had been discussing. Also, Chief Donovan, the Fire Marshal, the Cooper, and one other person who I apologize for not saying, we attended an event at Raytheon for Cal OSHA, they got a statewide award for their voluntary program, and it was very impressive, there was a representative from the state from Sacramento who came down, and, um, so we were present for that, and they had very nice things to say about our city, and I have to say, at Raytheon, everybody loves Fire Marshal Carver. He says he's been going there for 30-some years, but he can't even walk through that facility without people stopping and talking to him and wanting to hug him, so, at one point, we were trying to move him along, so he is beloved. Last night, I was honored to attend a Weebleows meeting at the Scout House, and that was great, I saw some of our future leaders there. They were all really polite, young man who asked excellent questions about the city and what's going on in town, so I love that young people are paying attention. Tomorrow, I am attending Supervisor Han's First State of the County, I don't know if anybody else is going, but as you may recall, we had Supervisor Han here a couple months ago to recognize her, because she was really instrumental in getting Vista Del Mar restripped. The city manager and the Public Works Director, the mayor, Pro Tem, and I spent a lot of time, I know staff spent a lot of time working with other regions, and she was, I think, the person who got it reversed, so I'll be happy to attend that and see her. I also have a sanitation district meeting, because being the mayor is very glamorous. Let's see, and this week, I am, I've been asked to sit on the California Women Lead Panel, and also I have a South Bay Aerospace Alliance meeting, and I also wanted to say, what Dr. Brand said, the El Segundo Centennial Celebration was phenomenal, there's so many people to thank. Thank you, Rec and Park staff, you guys were out there all day long, our police were out there, our fire department was out there, I saw Randy Collins, our emergency management coordinator, out there, forgive me if I'm leaving somebody out, I also want to thank the El Segundo Unified School District for allowing us to use their facilities, and also the United Methodist Church allowed us to use their kitchens for five hours, because we packed all those little boxes of food, if you got one of those. And also, in addition to the El Segundo Fire Department, who's been out providing aid to other regions, thank you, chief. I also want to thank Chief Wayland, this week, he had a post on Facebook, just talking about himself and the police department and, and their concerns, and I heard from so many people, I had to go look, because I heard from so many people that just really loved that community policing and your message to the community, so thank you, sir, for, for doing that. So I want to thank both our chiefs for everything both of those departments are doing, and... Oh, and you talked about the brilliance of Jeff Casey, and we're going to recognize him at a meeting coming up, because he brought our community together. Well, all day they were together, but for, there were 15 minutes that were magical in El Segundo, right? And, and I'm, yeah, it was really, I mean, like, just 15 minutes of a community heartbeat. It was, it was beautiful, so very grateful to him. So, with that, back to public communications, and since all the public I see here are city employees, I'm going to guess...
Back, back left.
Nope. Carl's still a city employee. All right, so with that, we are adjourned, 9:54, thank you.